All right, our next item is related to looking ahead to the 2022 school year and looking at some calendar recommendations that have come forward as a result of work by the administration, as well as input from the Calendar Committee and other sources as we begin to put some options in front of this board for your consideration and eventual selection and approval of a calendar. So, Dr. Tiggen, I'll turn it over to you.
Absolutely. Good afternoon, Chairman Cooper, members of the Board, and Dr. Cashwell. While we have been preparing for the start of the 2122 school year, staff and the Calendar Committee are already looking 14 months ahead to the 2223 school calendar. You might remember that prior to the pandemic, the Calendar Committee was recommending a two-week pre-Labor Day start. A pre-Labor Day start was not adopted for this fall, as last year, at this time, we were unsure of the impact of COVID-19 could have on this summer. As we look forward to the post-Labor Day start of the 2122 school year on September 8th, it is time to reengage teachers and families in the discussion of the calendar for the 2223 school year. As you may recall, the Calendar Committee has many representatives on it. This year, many of the members are the same as were on the committee that worked on the original 2021 school calendar. Members no longer able to serve or in new positions were replaced to maintain eight individuals per magisterial district to include the following from each district: teachers, students, parents, clerical staff, administrators, teachers, business partners, or community members, and then central office staff. The central office staff includes teaching, learning, and innovation, human resources, finance, facilities, athletics, transportation. That's just to name some of them. And truly, we try to get full representation because each one of them, along with the other members of the committee, bring a unique perspective and lens to the conversation. The Calendar Committee met yesterday to review drafts of a pre- and post-Labor Day calendar for 2022, 2023, and for 2023, 2024, and to discuss feedback from the Lunch and Learn that Andy Jinx hosted with Dr. Cashwell and myself on June 9th. The Calendar Committee will meet several more times prior to coming back in August. And we just want everyone to understand, we are just starting our discussion of a possible pre-Labor Day start. The Calendar Committee, based on feedback from that Lunch and Learn session, is recommending two calendar options be presented to the school board for further consideration in August. A pre-Labor Day start that begins to align us with divisions within the region and allows for additional holidays without adding additional workdays. We are already hearing from staff that the inclusion of the additional religious holidays is a wonderful way to honor Henrico's student diversity, but it does not honor the diversity of our staff. In a pre-Labor Day start, some employees' contractual work calendars would begin differently, but would ultimately include the same number of workdays as they do now. It would also provide additional staff holidays throughout the year while still providing additional instruction prior to AP and IB testing. Students in the ACA Centers would graduate from their high school shortly after graduating from JSarge. A post-Labor Day start that maintains, you know, basically will maintain the status quo and limits flexibility on that mid-June end date. While I know it is difficult, if not impossible, to read these draft versions of a one-week pre-Labor Day start and a post-Labor Day start for the 2022, 2023 school year, these drafts will be posted online for easier viewing, and you have a copy on the dais for you to reference. The feedback received after the Lunch and Learn session on June 9th, as I shared previously, was shared with the Calendar Committee. There were almost 2,000 people who responded, and for those indicating that they were not in support of a pre-Labor Day start, the main reason was because if we started one week earlier, they wanted to be sure we got out one week earlier. For the same, actually, that same reason was, or same comment, was the most popular in those that were undecided, and even those that said yes, they were for a pre-Labor Day start. So you will notice that these calendars, when working with the Calendar Committee, reflect that input from our staff and families. So here you can see, and then also, you see the two calendars, and we can discuss them more if you want. I know it's easier to see, just trying to give you an overview. But one of the things the Calendar Committee, you know, reflected on was that when we were meeting two years ago, they really felt like the positive impact of a pre-Labor Day start occurred with a two-week early pre-Labor Day start. And so the decision was made to actually draft a version for a second year so that you could see what would happen if, we took it in steps rather than, rather than a giant step, took a baby step and did a one-week early start, and then the following year, a two-year early start. And I'll go through what some of these benefits might be. Each of these calendars does provide the 990 instructional hours, 191 teacher workdays, and observance of religious holidays. So let's look at the differences between the pre- and post-Labor Day start. In a pre-Labor Day start, employees' contractual work calendars would begin one week earlier, and I repeat again, end one week earlier. The proposal includes two days of anytime, anywhere professional learning time outside of contract time for completion of online trainings and other teacher-selected professional learning. Additional days would be included as new staff holidays that occur during the 2022, 23 school year. For example, the Friday before Labor Day would be a holiday for teachers to provide a four-day weekend. This was a definite perk, as teachers and administrators indicated they often spend Labor Day preparing for the first day of school. The following student holidays would also be teacher holidays as well: Yom Kippur, Diwali, and Eid El Fitr. There are other religious and/or cultural observances listed on the calendar, such as Christmas, Easter, and the Lunar New Year, but each of these happens to fall on a weekend. To provide these holidays and still end a week earlier, there is a loss of banked time for inclement weather. So just want to be clear, because we're not at the 180 days, but we feel comfortable that we are well within the time that we need to have. And so with the post-Labor Day start, the overall length of the school year for students' and staff is maintained, and the religious holidays stay as student holidays and teacher professional learning and clerical days. The Calendar Committee does still support the pre-Labor Day start, both for honoring the diversity of our staff and the better alignment with the other localities in the region. Chesterfield County is opening two weeks pre-Labor Day this year, and Code RVA and Maggie Walker are discussing plans for a pre-Labor Day start moving forward. As such, the recommendation was to adopt a two-week pre-Labor Day start for the 2324 school year, providing an end-of-May end date for students and a June-1 end date for teachers. Members of the Calendar Committee identified several other advantages to a pre-Labor Day start, to include the following: lessening the time between fall sports starting and the start of the school year; positioning the start and end of school more closely to the college start and end dates; aligning the start and end of summer with our regional partners makes it easier for families to find summer programming for their children; and easing the transition into or back to school with a four-day break at Labor Day. And last, providing the opportunity for students to compete for summer jobs and internship opportunities due to the earlier date of the end of the school year. Right now, students are finding a difficult time when they're competing with students who are in localities that are already a pre-Labor Day start in our region. The list of advantages for the post-Labor Day start was short, with the only one identified by the committee being the tradition of feeling comfortable. So what's next? No decisions have been made. We plan to continue to provide additional informational sessions to gather additional feedback, and the Calendar Committee will review the feedback and make additional recommendations as appropriate for the school board to consider at the August 12th school board meeting. Of course, any changes will mean that we will seek additional feedback to present at the August 26th school board meeting prior to any calendar adoption. And I am happy to hear any direction from the Board and address any questions you may have.
Thank you so much, Dr. Tiggen, Ms. Atkins.
I was taking notes as you were talking. I didn't want to lose my thoughts, so thank you for your patience. Thank you for the presentation as well. Can you share how folks can provide feedback into the calendar?
Yes. Mr. Jinx and his team will be sending out information, and there will be a link for staff and families to be able to provide feedback.
I noticed on the slide, I think it said from May to July 19th, I can't, or what is that, June?
June 28th to July 19th.
Okay. So that's going to be the window in which folks can provide that feedback, is that correct?
Right. For the first review, you know, the Calendar Committee will come together the following week to review that information and look at what impact that may have on their recommendations.
I would add that we already have begun to gather feedback already. So we had the Lunch and Learn, and we gathered thousands of actual employees responded. That feedback helped the Calendar Committee get to this point, and so it's sort of, at each iteration, the Calendar Committee is offering another opportunity for feedback, and similarly looks to the Board's feedback, not just now, but along the way, and there'll be multiple opportunities to weigh in.
Will there be opportunities on our website as we receive the feedback to share the results of the feedback? I think that's an opportunity for communities to better understand how other folks are feeling about it as well. Will you be able to see the results as that feedback comes?
Not in real time, however, we can certainly pull the data and post it. Andy, you've got, let you.
Mrs. Atkins, I'm not familiar with a real-time feedback mechanism. It's certainly something we can consider, but I did want to mention that in addition to the electronic form that people can fill out anytime, anywhere, we're going to do two, actually, three sessions over two dates in July. So at the conclusion of this discussion, we'll be releasing everything that we have. First, a message to our employees, followed after that by a message to our student households. Third, and finally after that, a message to the general public. All that will unfold in roughly the next hour. That'll give people about one to two weeks to read it, digest it, understand that we have four different options that are out there for their review and feedback. At that point, that'll bring us to about mid-July, and so we'll talk through it as well, very similarly to how we're talking through it right now, with a session only for our employees on July 14th, and they'll get the link to that information as soon as we're done here today. After July 14th, we'll do two live sessions for the public, one in the late morning, the other in the late evening. And then no matter what, whether people can attend live or not, this being the summer, we want people to be able to watch on demand, essentially. So we'll email the links around, so that folks may not be able to pose a question live, but over the course of any 60- to 90-minute discussion, generally speaking, the most important questions get asked by somebody out there in the universe. And so we will have three recordings that we can email around to people. That takes place in July, which will inform the next update for the school board in early August, and then if any revisions take place after that, we'll report those out to the public at the appropriate time.
When you say "live," are you speaking live on social media or face-to-face?
These information sessions would be live, virtually using the Microsoft Teams Live Event feature. So we did not want to name a specific time and place that people had to drop what they were doing and visit in person. We've gotten accustomed, and in fact, I think had some success, in hosting many virtual events that would ordinarily draw a small crowd, draws a significantly larger crowd if we make it convenient for people to join from wherever they may be. So all three of those sessions will be taking place virtually in ways that are similar to previous community engagement efforts.
Are there any other opportunities to provide feedback, written or face-to-face? Are there any other ways?
The written feedback would be what we've discussed. The official feedback mechanism, the one that will create the public record that's shared with the school board, is done through our website. I think we'll see a lot of additional feedback on, let's say, the comments section of any of our social media pages, too. But we will encourage folks to send their feedback through our website so that it can be organized in a way that's easy to read for not only the Board, but when we report that out publicly.
So how do we communicate to folks who have a challenge with Internet?
I suppose that's something for the team to go back and consider. We've had a great deal of success, I would say, engaging folks with Internet, considering the amount of investment that this county has made providing access to folks. If an in-person session is necessary, I think the School Division is equipped to do that, and our feedback forms may allow an opportunity for someone to let us know how they are best reached. In addition, Board feedback can also provide us an opportunity to make adjustments where that may be necessary.
My thought process is, I think during the school year, we may have families more engaged because their children are in school. I think, given this summer, we'll have a lot of families wanting to take vacation and just disconnect. And so my thinking is, virtual definitely works, and we've seen success, but I'm wondering what success will we see over the summer?
Sure.
And wondering how can we make sure we reach parents in other ways that truly want to have some time to disconnect because they've been virtual for almost a year.
It's a valid concern, and I think that actually speaks to why the virtual formats were selected. Let's assume people have a summer job, or a summer camp, or a summer vacation, but might still want to be reached. That way, they can click a button, watch a session, and contribute electronically if that's something they prefer. So I would say that that actually informed our approach this summer, knowing that some folks may not want to drop what they're doing in the middle of a morning or an afternoon when their students aren't engaged in school in order to go to, say, a library or a school auditorium in the middle of the summer. So it's a, I don't know that it's a conundrum, but it is certainly what has informed our approach this summer in terms of wanting to reach people anytime, anywhere. But if they do not want to be reached, or if our feedback mechanisms show that people aren't being sufficiently reached, then we'd certainly have to reevaluate how we're going forward. However, I think it's fair to say, at least last month, nearly 2,000 responses, and that was just the first wave of asking. But to your point, that's different. We were engaging people in early June, and now we're transitioning into the summer.
Let me provide a recommendation at this point. I think that virtual is successful, and that has been proven. But even if there's 5% of families that want to disconnect over the summer or have challenges with Internet, I think we should have those conversations on how we reach them. So my recommendation would be perhaps, I don't know if it could be a leaflet, or a small flyer?
Sure.
Or, you know, print a few, even if it's just a gift to me to put in churches and to put at recreation centers. I think that that is helpful. The calendar is a priority topic in many communities, and having the opportunity to reach them, particularly this summer, unlike any summers in our history, many families want to disconnect. And I think it's wonderful to be able to reach them anytime, anywhere, virtually, and that we have that. I think we have an opportunity to do an and and not an or. And so hopefully, we can find a way, whether we print pamphlets, put them in churches, or partner with family and community engagement as they continue to engage families, just to hand something out to say, "Did you know about this?" And this is how you can provide your feedback. Does that make sense?
It sure does, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And I would just simply add, I think we appreciate the suggestions and feedback, and we'll certainly look at all of those, particularly, you know, Big Blues on the Go again. So there are a lot of outreach opportunities for us to be able to, you know, bring along a laptop, even for a family to respond electronically, printed material, et cetera. But we'll monitor our feedback levels as we employ the Lives Team events and that kind of thing, and if we're seeing significantly less participation than what's anticipated, you know, we're prepared to regroup, and certainly as we share our progress in gathering feedback along the way. Before we come back to you on the 26th for your approval, we would also, again, look to the Board at that time. Should you, as a Board, wish to solicit any additional feedback, I know in prior years before Boards have adopted calendars, they've wanted one additional survey or pulse point. We certainly are very flexible to continue to gather feedback, even beyond what we've mapped out here.
Yeah, because I want us to keep in mind that we're collecting all of the electronic materials from our families. So there are some families that are using those laptops to get to Schoology to get this information. So while we've collected and are collecting those laptops and all those instruments back, those devices, we may have families that don't have those devices. And so I just want us to keep in mind and not assume that every family has a laptop or an electronic device to get those communications, because we're taking them back.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Ms. Shea?
Thank you. Dr. Tiggen, I think you nailed the feedback that I have heard from parents, staff, administrators, all around, which is, if we start earlier, we should end earlier. So I appreciate not only the Calendar Committee making that adjustment before it even came to us for the first time, but also you clearly articulating that for those listening. I also appreciate, looking at this calendar, the lack of half-days. I know the previous Board, we've talked about that, but, you know, instructionally, half-days are a challenge to be productive frequently, also a really big challenge for our families with childcare. And so on that note, the only thing that really jumps out at me, so if I'm looking at the 2223 one-week pre-Labor Day start draft, there are two half-days. One is the Friday before spring break, which I think is totally appropriate. The other one is on February 1st, which is a Wednesday, and I know that's put there to align, like, I don't know why it's put there.
I can share that with you. That was actually a recommendation from our school-based staff and our teachers on the Calendar Committee, that when the end of the nine weeks come, rather than putting the early release on that day and teachers having clerical, they're busy collecting work from students, and they're still trying to grade, that having that time to do that several days after the end of the nine weeks would still hold report cards and everything at the same time, but provide teachers with a better ability to use that time for what it's meant for. And so that's why, and so it was, I think it's Friday that the nine weeks end.
27.
And then the first was the Wednesday, so that gave the days, and we've also heard from families that some of them really appreciate the Wellness Wednesdays and would like to see that, and so where they could be moved, you'll see they're on Wednesdays. You'll see they're not in all calendars, because I also know from feedback that when you chop up weeks in a month too much, it becomes problematic for families as well.
I appreciate that context. I would make the suggestion to perhaps look at that, moving that half-day from the first to the third. I know that will be a tighter turnaround for report cards, but as we do more things digitally and streamline things, I think for a lot of our families, that would be more advantageous.
I'll check on that, and I'll also check on the impact of that, because I know that's the end of the semester and grades going to colleges, so I'll do some checking, and if that's possible, absolutely.
I appreciate that. Just a couple other things. I certainly support if we're going to move towards a pre-Labor Day start, doing the baby steps, not doing two weeks at the same time, because, you know, technically, it shortens the summer on the summers that we move the calendar, and I think it's more digestible to have it shortened by a week twice in a row than two weeks at a time. So I like that baby step approach. I spent a lot of time talking with the various stakeholders, but particularly in our schools around athletics and marching band and all of those things that happened in August, when we were looking at this maybe last year, about how would an earlier start impact your programs? And the overwhelming feedback I heard is that it perhaps will actually increase access for students who don't have transportation readily available, because they don't have to be dropped off at school and picked up from school back-to-back for a practice. And so that is a piece that I think, a positive unintended consequence, that I think people haven't, may not be on the top of their mind. And then also, for our younger students, when we are aligned regionally, it eases access to summer programming and childcare, as a lot of our other regional partners are shifting to a pre-Labor Day start. That is all I have. Thank you.
Ms. Ogden.
You bet. Mrs. Shea covered a lot of, I think, really great points, but that alignment piece, I think, is so important. And, you know, for years, we lobbied, and we had it in our legislative platform that we wanted to start early. And now then, when we, it's kind of like when you catch the bus, what do you do with it? It's, we've caught it now, so it's time. And so I am so glad we're looking at it. I think it's time for us to align ourselves with not only those regional programs, but AP courses and testing and all of the other reasons that we wanted to do this. But again, I agree with Mrs. Shea. Boy, am I hearing if we start early, we get out early. The extra days, they, you know, I think the idea of ending earlier in June is very palatable to folks, but the lengthening was like, wait a minute, that's not what we thought we were going to get. So I'm glad you're hearing that, and it's already changed. But I agree with Mrs. Shea. I like the idea of the baby steps, because I think two weeks at once, that's going to be a bitter pill for people to swallow. But I think y'all are on the right track. I appreciate the work. But, you know, we are already getting feedback on this. It is, as Mrs. Atkins said, it's a really big issue with people. And so, but no, I look forward to what's coming. I know that, I think it's just important to hear. No decisions have been made. It is a, this is a first look, for sure, and that this, you know, will continue until we get it right, because there's no rush here. So, but thank you. I don't have any questions for you, just feedback.
You're welcome. I'd also like to say that on the feedback that we did receive, that was not only staff, but families, you know, that had access to be able to provide feedback to us. And part of doing that communication on June 9th was to make sure that we engage people before they went home for the summer, so that this wasn't a first discussion on the calendar.
Right.
And so I hope, while I understand they may not want to be engaged right now, I think they are aware, you know, from the communications that went out from.
Right. Well, I mean, history would show that we try really hard not to tackle the hard topics over the summer when people disengage a bit. I think we have the access now, and even though, like you said, we're picking up the devices from kids, I think more parents than ever are engaged, and we need to keep them that way. But we do have to know that there are some families who are not going to have access to information this summer. So for those, I mean, that's why this continues into August, and we don't generally vote until end of the fall. So we'll get it right before we do it, but I just think that, you know, there are some things we're tackling over the summer that by the, it's because, it's just the way it's worked out. And so this is one of those topics that we need to discuss for a long time. And again, we don't normally tackle big things over the summer, just because of that lack of access, but this, just being the first conversation is, I think, an exception to that rule. But anyway, thank you for what you're doing.
Ms. Cancelo.
Yes, I'd just like to thank the superintendent and the team for starting this conversation early and not waiting until the fall, which I think we normally would have done.
Yes.
Because I know we got a lot of questions, or at least I did, about the timing of this calendar conversation at June 9th, right, doing a survey. And once again, it's trying to be transparent and trying to get the feedback from our stakeholders. So I just appreciate you starting the conversation earlier than we normally would, and especially because of the changes that we're talking about. And I echo my colleagues' comments, especially the feedback, if we're going to start earlier, well, we better be in. well, we better be ending earlier. So I think we're unanimous in that regard, perhaps.
That was loud and clear.
So I appreciate you putting that forward on, on both option, I mean, at least on both calendar options for 22-23, 23-24, pre-Labor Day start. I agree with slow transition as well. Two, two weeks is a little too much, and I don't think we, we need any more extra. So, so I support one-week intervals, so that folks get used to it and, and they just have enough notice to process. In response to what Ms. Atkins was saying, I agree, so many of our folks can't wait to disconnect. I know I'm looking forward to disconnecting a little bit in July, and the return of the devices is also a concern for me. How are we now communicating with our kindergarten families who may not yet be HCPS families? Are we still doing the mailing postcards to those families? Because that may be a way to reach folks, to let them know about the calendar, is my point.
There's a lot of mailings going out to our families just to try to reengage, to orient, not only to our brand-new kindergarteners, but maybe kindergarteners from last year that will be new with us as first graders or possibly kindergarten, you know? So there's a lot of communication going out from our schools to our families, and we do rely a lot on our schools to communicate because the community often listens, our families listen to our school leaders probably more than they listen to us.
Right. If I could just to, to ask that, we try to leverage whatever different kinds of mailers that we're doing to be more cost-effective as well, but also sending important information so those families feel included and in the know. Also putting forward, our libraries are also a great way to share information, whether it's a placard people can take out with them or use computers in our libraries, since Henrico County has such nice ones. So I just wanted to put that forward. I also support what Mrs. Shea said about access to daycare, childcare, by taking out many of the half-days and by changing the calendar and being so responsive. I know in my district, I heard a lot about families that this year was so challenging on Wednesdays to, to find daycare for Wellness Wednesday, so thank you for being responsive to that. Other than that, I, I look forward to all the feedback, and I'm glad we're doing it in phases. Oh, lastly, I just think it's important to say on the record, out of all the feedback I receive personally, I did, everyone supports the culturally responsive calendar, and I know that Henrico Schools was one of the first to be more culturally responsive with their calendar. And I know that we had some employees that also wanted us to be more responsive because the students were getting the holiday, but not our employees. So I appreciate the attention in listening to our employees and being more responsive. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much, Dr. Tighgen. I just want to kind of highlight, I just want to, again, reiterate, thank you for the feedback that you provided thus far in the presentation, and I just look forward to more community input.
Thank you. We look forward to it as well.
All right. So more to come on that. All right. Thank you again, Dr. Tighgen and Mr. Jenks.